Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Good, then I'm going to call to order the Select Board meeting on January 21st, 2021. I will be calling roll in a few minutes, but I'll tell you, anyone who is out there that we are being live streamed on Fact TV and that if you have questions, you can submit them to Sarah to ask if you'd like. When I call roll, if you'll please say aye and tell us whether there's anyone else in the room with you. Steve DeLassio.
Aye and nobody.
Cheryl Mayberry.
Aye, nobody.
And I'm Peggy Pashir and there's no one here with me. Sarah Downing, our manager of administration.
Here and I'm the only one here.
Okie doke and Regina.
Except for Mice.
Except Mice. Okay, and Regina Borden is our secretary. Could we begin, please, with the Select Board Agenda, which was distributed earlier? Steve, are you going to do these?
If Cheryl has them up, she can start.
Cheryl, are you?
Do not, I do not.
We're in good shape.
I know.
I have the basic, but I don't have the noted version up.
You, I have it here. So I'll tell you what, I'll do the first motion.
Yeah, I'll get it. I had it up and then I lost it.
I move that we approve accounts payable check register in the total amount of $521,638.92 for checks issued 1/22/21. This includes a $464,025 payment to Consolidated Communications for a Broadbank bond payment at 50% of the work accomplished.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So accounts payable are approved.
I make a motion to accept the payroll register totaling $28,096.81 for checks dated 1/22/21 and the 9/41 payroll tax transfer of $5,487.41.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the payroll? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. If you are in favor, please say aye. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the payroll is approved.
I make a motion to accept the Select Board minutes of January 14th to 2021.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about these minutes from January 14th? We do have Jack Wozmac with us now, I'll note, has joined us. Okay, if there are no questions or comments, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the Select Board minutes for January 14th, 2021 are approved. If you're wondering why I don't call for nays, because there are only three of us who can vote. And so once all three have voted yeses, there's no need to call for a nay or abstention.
I vote, I make a motion to accept the non-public Select Board session minutes of January 14th, 2021, and they shall remain sealed.
Second.
Any questions or comments about it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote then. All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And Peggy votes aye. So the minutes for, non-public minutes for January 14th are approved and sealed. Do you, either of you have the agenda in front of you for the rest?
Yeah.
I do, yeah. It's fine, we're all set. I didn't know if Jack wanted to go.
Oh, I was just in the internet neighborhood, so I thought I'd stop in and see if there was any discussion to have or anything I ought to know with respect to the upcoming town meetings and so forth. I know the chair and I had spoken a bit, so I thought I would just see if there's anything you needed from me or if there's any conversation to have, and if not, that's fine.
We haven't, we haven't really even put it on the agenda tonight because I think there are so many things that could happen between now and when we would have to notify people have changed. And I'm not aware that the legislature has done anything about passing that legislation that was meant to give towns the opportunity to postpone their meetings until April, May, June, or July. So at this point, as far as I'm concerned, we're going ahead on the 9th of March and the 13th of March.
Okay, I do think, and I can confirm it for you later, I do think that between the moderator and the selectmen, we can delay it if we wanted to for emergency circumstances, notwithstanding the dependency of Senate Bill 2, which is the one that we're kind of sort of waiting for. At least that's the opinion that I've read from the municipal association, that the moderator has the statutory power already to kind of push it out a bit if we need to. But again, I'm not advocating necessarily.
Okay, I'd like to sort of wait, frankly. I mean, I know that.
Too early.
It's too early to make that decision today. Of course, they announced that our numbers had gone down, but at the same time, we had a new case yesterday. So, and I know that the village salon in town has closed because they had an employee who is, has tested positive. So I think it's too soon for us to.
No, I agree. But I just wanted to keep in touch. I haven't been, hadn't seen you for a while, so I just want to keep in touch.
No, that's fine, great. Okay.
Well, hang in there. We're going to continue with our agenda.
You bet, no problem.
Okay.
I recognize the following reports, Planning Board meeting of January 12th, 2021, and the Library Trustees minutes of January 12th, 2021.
Those committee reports are so acknowledged.
I make a motion to accept the land use change tax on map 21, lots 25 and 26 in the amount of $37,500 for two adjacent lots on North Road.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about it? I think Sarah sent out the background material so that you have read it and understand why there is this change in the land use.
Yes. I make a motion to accept.
Let me call the roll for the vote, please. All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the land use change tax is approved.
I make a motion to accept the timber intent to cut on map 13, lot 60, sub lot 1, for a lot located off of Cheney Hill Road.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about this timber intent? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote, please. All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Peggy, aye. So that is approved. We move to old business and the first item is the general fund expenditure detail. Did you all get copies of that today, or do you have a recent copy of the budget and how you'd like to approach this? Are there things that you think need to be tweaked or changed? I think we are at 2.51% for operating budget increase and I hope we don't have anything dramatic that we need to do to what we already have.
I just have something to talk about in non-public.
Okay.
With regards to the budget.
Okay, fine.
I'm good.
All right. Is it close enough for you to approve it?
No.
Apparently, no.
I won't.
Okay. If, I hope we don't have so much complication that we can't get it approved within the week.
No, no, it's just, we need to have a conversation, just to make sure something's been included.
Okay, all right. Draft warrant articles, have you had an opportunity to look at those? They've been massaged constantly over the last week or two. We still do have in that unassigned fund balance of proposal that we want to use for painting Town Hall and repairing the ceiling and do some library work. We do have extra money in that $200,000 if there's something else that we've missed that needs to be corrected or repaired in town buildings.
Yeah, just, we have the, we have the, to make sure in that is the water meter at the park. Right? I don't think we did anything specific about that, but it needs to be included in that $200,000. That's about $6,000.
This is the water meter at the park?
Yeah.
At the rec.
At the recs and rec park, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. We've got enough in there for that. That's, because our bid for painting, and we could only get one, people were not interested in bidding on the job, is about $89,000. And the estimate for fixing the second floor ceiling, which has some difficulties, is about $15,000. So.
Right.
We don't yet have full estimates of what we'll spend in the North Walpole.
Right. But we need to, we need to rephrase that warrant article.
Right, he wants to include the meter, the meter update in Wickham Park.
Okay. We can do that.
But that, but if we're going to do something in North Walpole Library.
It has to be named, mentioned.
It should be named because right now it's very specific what the money could be spent on.
That's right. So we need to make it broader.
Yep.
So that's easy to rewrite. And it really doesn't raise the cost of the warrant at all.
No, it's just word, wordsmithing.
Okay. Any others that you want to change, that you want to elaborate on in these warrants?
Should we consider, I don't know about what Ben is thinking about that concrete pad? If that should be, if we should raise that $200,000 a little bit to give him some wiggle room to put that pad in. It's a real problem. It's a real muddy mess there.
Well, how does, how does this relate to the fact we have a warrant article to pave out there?
That's for the back section of the building.
One time he talked about we needed to pave near the entrance because it was so muddy.
Well, we talked about that not being desirable for the recycling center, but we paved, we wanted to pave the loading area around the side because that's really muddy too. But we didn't talk about where the trash compactors are. That's kind of a new, a new twist.
Right, it sounds like he just wants to build a pad next to the compactor so that he can move it.
Yeah.
Bobcat.
With the bobcat, or we just have.
Do you want to add that to his existing article, include that area?
I would, I would.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I just wanted to know if we should add, take a wild guess at it and give him a week to try to get the exact number and get a quote.
I say it can't hurt.
And it has to be concrete, it can't be asphalt?
I think it'll be too soft, Peggy.
Yeah, because a compactor gets pretty heavy.
Yeah. In the short term, Mike Rao can lift it with the loader, even on the dirt, but on, in the long term, it's not going to be suitable for, you know, have Mike Rao every other, every couple of days go over there to move it.
Can you raise this up, Sarah? The, we're looking at seven and eight. Where is that, that specific article? That deals with the.
Article nine.
There it is. Okay, do you want to change that?
Yeah, I think so. We leave the first section and to build, you know, a concrete pad for the compactors or something like that.
Yeah.
So we raise and appropriate the sum of, and he's going to have to give us an estimate quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, we will rewrite that then. That's Article nine. Any others that you want to talk about? I think the rest of them are fairly standard. We've got the one with, for the pool house, we mentioned that. All right, hearing, if there's nothing else to be discussed then about that, we'll move on. And any other comments about warrant articles? Going once, going twice? Okay, let's move then to the fact that, I want to just give you a brief update. Sarah, you can remove that now if you'd like. I want to give you an update on the Brownsfield in that it was becoming active again after sort of some brief pause, I guess I'd say, partly caused by the COVID, but we will be sending out an RFP within about two weeks for the contractor to, to find a contractor who will remove all of that contaminated soil at the Brownsfield site. And I have a lot of work to do right now to talk, with talking with the Butters and everyone else, because we are going to need some space for equipment that will be over the line of what that brown field actually is. There is a new EPA contact. I think I told you that Joe Ferrari, who had been our EPA person in the Boston Region One office of the EPA, died in December, kind of came, everybody, no one knew he was really that sick. He has been replaced by a person who joined the agency in August. Her name is Katie Deng, D-E-N-G. I've chatted with her and have introduced her to Steve Rickarich at Ransom. And we are going to be arranging a Zoom among the three of us, plus probably if we can get Mike McCloskey, the state representative for this Brownfield project together, so we can talk about what we're doing and bring Katie up to date. Although she has files, we feel we need to talk with her generally about where we are at this point. We expect that, we don't know where the contractor will start, whether they'll start first by removing that shed. And you heard me ask the highway and recycling people if they had any use for the fence. And I hope they do, otherwise we're going to have to find, we will have to recycle it and it will just simply cost us more money to have the project manager, whoever cleans up the place, take care of that fence. It was paid for out of our money held in escrow, you know, from the estate of the former owner of the site. So that's really all there is, but it, it will begin to be active. And as soon as spring comes, or late spring, we should be working in that area. I'm also in conversation with Mascoma Bank because of course, we've got to clean up the grassy spot that's between the parking lot and the Brownfield site. And I need written approval from them to clean it up. They gave us permission to test it. We know there are PFASs in that spot, so now I'm asking for permission to allow us to remove that contaminated soil. At the same time, they're talking about potentially giving us that strip and potentially giving us, wanting to give us, the town parking lot. And I've told them that they must make that decision as quickly as possible because we have to go through a hearing process if in fact, we are to accept that parking lot. And I don't know how the two of you feel, we haven't talked about it for a while, how you're feeling about accepting that parking lot, but there are probably some benefits to us and some downside to having it. We take, we lease it now, we take care of it now. We don't pay anything for that lease and we wouldn't really be paying anything for the lot, except maybe a dollar. So I'll just keep you informed with what they propose unless you have some specific things you'd like to direct me to do as I hold those conversations with the local person, Katie Dearborn, and then their central office.
I don't have any concerns. It's kind of like the parking lot at Wickham Park, right? We're maintaining it and everything already.
Yes, we are.
I think the only thing would be, you know, what condition is it in? And is it need, is it going to need to be repaved or is it, is it okay for now? I think that that's the only additional cost I can see us having if we're already maintaining it.
Well, we are going to have costs because once this site is completely cleaned up and all the soil removed, we will have that, where the shed is will be a grassy area, green area with benches and that sort of thing. But we will have to go to the town in 2022 to ask for money to pave that so that we extend the parking lot and that we add electric stanchions. Our contract will allow the ransom to see that the place gets a sort of a thin coat of asphalt over it all, but we undoubtedly will want to improve that. And they'll put in the basic wiring for the electric stanchions for electric cars, but we will have an expense as a town to really turn it into a parking lot and a green space. But that will be for 2022's budget.
The only thing I'd be concerned of is that we lose another tax revenue.
Well, I'll see how much that is. I don't know.
I don't know what it is, but we would just lose another revenue stream.
Right. I doubt that it's particularly high, but it could be. We'll have. You know, part of that, their space is limited. Remember, part of that asphalt now behind, well, I think it starts actually behind the bank, behind Jake's. That part of the lot is owned by the Walpole Foundation. And if we decide, and they will repave their own portion of that lot, if in fact, we get the town to agree to repave the other, you know, what we might own at that point, they'll use that opportunity to also go ahead and repave their section. So I'll just keep you up to date then, if you don't have any other questions or comments at this point. Steve, do you want to bring us up to date for the Houghton Brook Bridge repair since your meeting this morning?
I did not attend the meeting, but I've got the notes from Fussin' O'Neil. I was in the dentist's chair during the meeting.
What fun.
Yeah, but what's, they just met with DES to get the paperwork necessary to get the executive council to approve our $250,000 grant. It's just, I think, three or four documents. Fussin' O'Neil is going to generate them and we'll have to sign them.
All right.
I've asked Fussin' O'Neil to do the heavy lifting. That's what we're paying them for.
Yes.
The next phase is the permitting phase. And they're gonna, we're gonna have to update their purchase order to go through the next phase, which is the permitting phase. And they'll be working up a price for that in the next two or three weeks. They're going to be meeting with DES on a pre-permitting discussion. And that's, that's pretty much where it's going to go. We did get at least verbal permission from the landowner up there to use his property as a cutoff, so we might not have to replace, build a replacement bridge or a temporary bridge. And that should save us $75,000 to $90,000 on the cost of the project.
That's good.
Yeah. Providing, you know, the Butters and the landowners up there go along with the idea. Police and fire have gone along with the idea. So.
We have a scheduling, a public meeting to discuss this with the Butters.
Yeah, we will. I think once we get through the pre-permitting phase. But as Mike mentioned, it's definitely a 2022 project. It's not going to be a, anything earlier than that. They're talking about nine months for permitting.
Okay.
So.
2022 is going to be a busy year.
Yeah, for everybody in the town. I did write an article for the Clarion summarizing the Houghton Brook Bridge Reservoir Dam and Mill Pond Dam. While we're here, Reservoir Dam, Fussin' O'Neil has met with the DES to get the parameters correct for the 2D model, so they don't go back and forth with them over a bunch of times. And I guess they're pretty close to being able to submit the 2D model now to DES.
So they were able to reach agreement on what the parameters were?
Yeah, yeah. The DES has been very cooperative, so I can't see, you know, too many technical issues that way. And once we get that 2D model and get the classification for the dam, then we will take the next step and try to figure out what the solutions are for that problem. But the early indications is Mill Pond Dam is going to have to go through that same 2D modeling process.
Really?
Yep. And just like the reservoir dam, if it has, if it gets classified as a high hazard dam, then there's a lot of work that has to be done to that road.
Main Street.
Main Street. Just like, you know, the question with reservoir, whether you have to raise the dam.
Right.
If that's the case, we got to raise the road.
Oh my.
So lots depends on that 2D model, which I'm guessing is the new standard because they keep asking for it over and over again.
2D model.
And Jack's shaking his head up and down, so.
Done too quickly, would it? I mean, 2D model, when are they planning that? Are we going to work at the same time we're working on the reservoir? Are they going to start?
No, it's a completely different activity. We haven't really talked much about Mill Pond. We kind of put it on the, the back end of this, all these projects. Because between Houghton Brook and Reservoir Dam, we've got a lot of things, irons in the fire to get through DES. And I think it's better not to overload everything.
Right, I agree. Well, financially, it's better too.
Yeah, nobody's pushing, like DES isn't pushing a timeline, which is kind of interesting. I think they just want to make sure we're working on it more than anything else.
Well, we are. We have for years on Houghton Brook.
Yeah, and years on Mill Pond too. But all the easy things have been fixed. So it's not like we ignored it. We did all the easy work that we could accomplish. But now we're down into, if it's a high hazard or a significant hazard, you know, reservoir dam technically is a low hazard dam right now. And they're looking at it and say, boy, that's wrong.
Well, when we were working on our emergency.
Right.
Plans, our mitigation plans, we all identified that dam as being the most important thing.
Right, exactly. So all this reclassification is necessary. I've been arguing that Mill Pond is a low hazard dam because when the flashboard rotted last winter, the pond drained by itself and nobody even noticed.
No, it was mud.
Until, until there was an island up in the middle of the thing. And they're saying that it's a high hazard dam or a significant hazard dam. Because if it overtops the road, it will flood onto Route 12. So.
Oh, all right.
So that's all part of the discussions that have to take place. But we'll get there, we'll get there. So that's the latest on our infrastructure.
Good.
Projects.
Is there anything else to come up on your old business at all? We don't have anything else to report at this point. Let's go to new business then. Would you, can you, Sarah, put up the appointment notice that we have for Megan? Are you able to put it up, Sarah?
She's working on it.
Okay.
Well, while Sarah is doing that, I'll just bring up another conversation I've had with Mark over the last couple of months. I know with COVID, we kind of got off the track a little bit, but somewhere in the springtime, we need to have another meeting of the committee that worked on the emergency operation. meeting of the committee that worked on the emergency operation plan.
Yes.
So that we can continue the discussions about what we need to prep ourselves better for emergencies within the town.
Such as generators and such things.
Yeah, those kinds of discussions. But I don't think we should drop off, now that it was just because we did the operations plan, I don't think we should drop those discussions.
So we have work to do still. We haven't finished the work related to that.
Yeah, it's nice to finish the plan, but I think it would be good if we all kept going with it.
I have in front of you the notice of appointment that, that we have appointed Megan Hansen as the interim town clerk tax collector. And one thing that I had Sarah change, just because it once said March 13th, 2021, and often the off chance that we might have to change that, I asked her to put in through the 2021 town meeting. That's the basic change I asked for. So if, if you approve of this, I'd like a motion, please, that it be signed.
Yeah, I have no problem with this. Peggy, what led us to the interim, interim?
Interim, because that's all she is at this point. She's not official in that respect. She's considered in an interim position. She hasn't been elected. She hasn't been elected.
She hasn't been elected. Okay.
I had the same observation, Peggy. I was wondering why the word interim hadn't been in there.
We don't use it for like planning board members that fill terms and things like that.
Well, I think this maybe falls in a different category. We do, we do say that they are appointed until the next election, and I wanted that to be clear in here.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept it. I just was curious. I think I even mentioned, I think I even questioned it on her salary change, too. So I'll make a motion to accept appointment notice of Megan Hansen as interim town clerk, town clerk, tax collector through the 2021 town meeting.
Second, are there any other questions or comments about it? Hearing none, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving this appointment notice, Steve DeLassio?
Aye.
Cheryl Mayberry?
Aye.
And Peggy Pashir, I vote aye as well. So it is approved and we'll, this will be for us to sign in town hall. Okay. Is that the water sewer users notice, which Jody sent us a copy of for us to read, it will go into the mailing that she's going to do soon for the fourth quarter, but it will reference the first quarter when we change the method of how we collect bond payments for sewer usage. And you've all seen it. Have you had an opportunity, I hope, to read it? Are there any questions or comments you have about it?
No, looks good.
I wrote it, so. I don't have any questions.
Even if Steve wrote it, it still looks good.
It still looks okay.
All right. Well, then can we have a motion, please, to approve it so that in fact she can put it in this next mailing?
I, I move to approve the Walpole, the Walpole sewer users notice.
Second.
All right. Are there any questions or other comments about it? Hearing none, then I will call for a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we have approved that and we will sign it, please, sometime over the weekend so that it can be included in all of our next filling envelopes. We have received a report. I don't know whether you can throw it up, Sarah, in any way, can you? The landfill post closure report, is it something we need to act on?
Yes, there's a, the, the chair needs to be nominated to sign because there's only one signature area.
All right.
And I don't know, I had to dig for it a little bit because I didn't, it's pretty lengthy.
That's right, it is, it is.
The, the only thing I would question, and again, I don't have a problem with us signing it, but if the excessive methane is going to be a problem for us.
I thought it went down.
Well, it fails the state requirements for methane. I think he called for it in the, in the document as well.
But I don't remember that it said what, it didn't have any rest, anything that mediated, did the report?
No, I, I don't know if it matters. I would just ask the guy that, McGibben, to see if it's, if it's going to mean anything to us. It would be nice if these guys would write like a, just a brief summary statement for us. Because when you read through the report, it's hard to tell whether or not it means anything. The discrepancies actually mean something to the town of Walpole.
Any other questions or comments about it? Sarah, I take it you're looking at it.
Yeah, I was trying, I thought the, I thought the methane was a problem last time and it's, I thought it went down this time, but.
No, it still doesn't, it's still flagged in the report. If you go down all the little checkboxes.
Oh, the check, oh yeah, I'm just looking at the narrative.
Yeah, if you go down the checkboxes, you'll come to, to methane and you'll see that it's checked off, that it's out of range.
It's still present.
Yeah.
We have our dreaded PFAS in here.
So, but I'll still make the motion that we authorize Peggy Vashir as chair to sign the Walpole landfill post closure report.
Second.
Are there any other questions or comments about it? Hearing none, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So I will come in and that's approved and I'll sign it tomorrow or over the weekend. Anything else under new business that needs to come up?
I want to ask Jack a question since he was so good and he sat through all this with us. Did our, has the school district talked to you about doing a walkthrough prior to the day before?
Well, I, I, we're going to do something, I believe, on February 1st in the evening in terms of some sort of Zoom pre-meeting to kind of orient us to what he'd like us to do to help out the school board meeting. I, I am not aware of a physical walkthrough of the building, but I'm expecting something from Leroy to kind of tee up what we're going to be doing in a couple of weeks to kind of help out. I, I guess we're going to use the school building and put some socially distanced people in certain classrooms and use the closed circuit to communicate. And somehow those of us in the room monitoring will be messengers or mini moderators or something. I'm not honestly sure about it. I spoke to Leroy the other week when he asked me to help out.
Well, my understanding is that, yeah, that they're going to have like a group in, a town in the gym in the auditorium and some of the larger areas in the high school. And that you're going to be with the town of Walpole just to make sure we're on our best behavior.
Yes, well, I, I guess so, yeah.
Right, to help facilitate, like, there's going to be like a monitor or a computer or something in the front of every area, and then if people want to speak, they can come up to it and then everybody could see them on their screen. That's kind of what I have a sense of and that you're going to kind of keep track of who wants to speak from the town of Walpole because you'll be in the same room.
Right. The, the thing that, yeah, that, that, I think, I think that's right. The thing I'm not sure of is the extent to which people from the same town, like Walpole, would have a separate or different room if for some reason they want to attend and they're unable or unwilling to wear a mask. And I don't know if he's addressed that, but conceivably, there might be people.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if I heard from you or from someone else that were talking about having a separate room for that, where people.
Yeah. Yeah, we're supposed to have some orientation or training about how that's going to go. And, you know, we'll dive in and I'll do the best I can and do whatever he says.
Good. Well, I was just, I was being led to believe that there would be more than just the day before. That's my concern as far as making sure it runs smoothly. But you guys have some time to sort of maybe practice it out a little bit. So I'm going to follow up. School district.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can see what Leroy thinks. I, I'm not aware of any plan other than the time I've, you know, set aside to hear what he has to say when we're all together in a Zoom meeting.
Okay, and for those that don't know, I apologize. We're talking about the school district Fall Mountain Regionals deliberative session, which will be Tuesday, February 2nd. And all the towns of Fall Mountain are invited to attend at the high school in Langdon.
So, so as near as I know, we're going to have a Zoom meeting on the 1st.
Yeah.
Say again?
You mean your, your, your training meeting with them? Right. I think it's still going to, I'm not sure if it's still going to be with Zoom within the building, but that's what it sounds like to me, like that would make the most sense, but I'm not sure.
There will be no virtual meeting for this deliberative session. Is that right?
That's what I'm understanding at this point, is that it'll be in the building and will be just connected through the network in the building. And that's to try to, so that every town has equal internet access. They don't have to worry about the differences of service or connectivity or anything that might impede someone's ability to participate in the meeting. And I think that was the biggest reason.
Built the possibility of a super spreader event.
Well, I, I don't know how they're monitoring, I don't know how they're monitoring into the building. And I mean, I don't know how many people are comfortable going. But I know they're using like, you know, Walpole, if you think about how many people go every year, the auditorium is plenty big enough to socially distance within the auditorium. So if, if Charlestown's in the gym, you know, I'm not really sure where they're putting people, but I don't think that they're going to, hopefully, you know, it'll be well vetted out so that there's a minimal risk.
I hope so.
Well, I'm going to breathe before I go there. And, and I'm grateful that by then I will, oh, actually, I, geez, I'll be one day away from my second vaccination shot, so I'll have marginal protection, I guess.
Good, good.
You want a whole suit? We'll get you a mask and a shield and a whole PPE suit with gloves and rubber boots and you'll be fully protected.
I have all that. I have all that already. I have.
I'm glad, Jack. I'm really glad.
I won't, I won't be scared if you drop in that getup.
Yeah, I have all I need every night.
Is there anything else that needs to be kind of come up under new business? If not, I am going to adjourn our portion of the town meet, public meeting, and we will go into a Hooper trustee meeting. All right?
Yep.
Just stay with us, folks. So I'm going to call the public meeting.
Take care, Jack.
I will, I will leave you now.
Okay.
Take care, Jack.
See you later. I'm going to adjourn our public meeting then at about 7:13 PM, and I'm going to ask for a motion that we go into the Hooper trustee meeting.
I move to go into the Hooper trustee meeting.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Peggy, we are in the Hooper trustee meeting, and the first matter of business are the Hooper trustee minutes from December 17th. Have you all seen them?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the Hooper trustee meeting, meeting minutes of December 17th, 2020.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about them? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So they are approved.
I make a motion to accept the letter of interest in the Hooper Institute Board for Sue Naidoo.
Second.
Okay, this is to platemaker, a member of the Board of Directors for the Hooper Institute, correct?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to see her on Zoom.
Okay, good.
Quite talented and she will, has volunteered to pick up the development fundraising portion of the Hooper Institute.
Terrific. That's good. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, has a lot of experience.
Good. I had a brief chat in the hallway the other day at town hall with Helen when she was dropping some things off, and she's very excited about that and also excited about the potential for a, a meeting in March sometime.
Yes, we had, we talked extensively about fundraising at the last Hooper meeting. The one thing that I brought up was that the goal has already been set. It's called the revenue budget.
That's right.
I'm not too particular about where the money comes from, but we do need to raise money, whether it comes from Fohai or it comes from the endowment or whether it comes from Hooper Institute fundraising. It's all, it's all fine.
Well, let's vote for approval of appointing Sue Naidoo to the Hooper Institute Board. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we can write her a letter and also tell Helen that we have appointed her to their board. I'm glad to hear that she's experienced in fundraising. I think that was incredibly valuable for them.
Yes, incredibly. And.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the other things we discussed beyond fundraising, there was an idea that the Hooper Institute would couple with the 4H program and the town hall to have education pods so that students can give their parents a break with all the remote learning and come to the town hall as a group. They would use the UNH check-in criteria, and it would more be more mechanized, and the 4H people who are already vetted as child, for childcare, would be the, the monitors at the town hall. However, UNH has, 4H has declined because of COVID restriction policies within their, their own world. So the idea is kind of put on hold right now. But what we're starting, what they were starting to see is parents, like kids that were all in the same class, would go to one parent's house for the remote learning to give the other parent a break. So it looks like there's some collaboration going on within the town amongst people.
Good.
So I think that's good. So that's one way they're getting a break from the online remote-only activities. And it's mostly high school, I think, where kids are seeing more of a strain.
Yep.
Not being around their friends and so forth.
Well, I can tell you that at the governor's press conference this afternoon, he couldn't have been clearer because he was bombarded with questions about it, about how he promotes kids being in school. And he's under a lot of, catching a lot of flak right now. But he was quite clear and very consistent in his message that there is very little evidence that this is a big spreader, having kids in school. But anyway, that was an interesting to hear. Is there anything else to come up about Hooper? At all?
No, I think it's going well.
Yeah, I do, too.
It's getting, it's getting legs.
That's what we wanted it to do.
Yep.
Great. Well, if there's nothing else, then I will adjourn the Hooper meeting at 7:20 PM. Great. Well, if there's nothing else, then I will adjourn the Hooper meeting at 7:20 PM. And we will take a short recess and reset ourselves in a non-public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.